Packages that we have have to go out to different vendors. And then you did receive bids from K work for the workers compensation side and then K camp for your property casualty liability insurance. All agencies are represented here this evening. For further explanation and any discussion that you need regarding this bid packet. And Iron Insurance Partners as our current agent did provide a summary of differences, comparisons, and overall coverage that was included in your packet. And so after discussion and any questions that you have of the agencies this evening, and I will let all of them introduce the different people that they brought with them. You can determine what you feel like is the best option for Seward County. Is there any particular order that you want them to come up in? No?
Hello, good evening. My name is Ken Canning and I am the CEO Administrator of K Camp. I have with me tonight Associate David Lamb, who's our Member Representative, former Board Member of K Camp and former county clerk in Lynn County. Also Mark McGoy is here and he is also on the Board of Directors at K Camp. And he is County Commissioner of Grant County.
Some of the question came up about liability. Iron Horse was, I think a million per incident.
Okay.
K Camp was 500,000.
Sure, I can address that. And we were able to look at the board agenda and saw the attachments and saw the, we saw the document from the agency outlining the review of the proposals. So I could address some of those things. And for example, the limit of liability, as you know, Kansas has a Kansas Tort Claim Act that limits certain claims recovery to $500,000. So in our proposal, any claim that would be subject to that act is limited to the statutory recovery of half a million. For all other claims, our per occurrence limit is actually $3 million. That would be more than a million from your current policy. So thank you, that was a great question for clarification of why it shows that limit, $500,000 for tort cap claims and otherwise 3 million. And if you'd like, I could kind of go through some of their points here. The biggest one is the deductible on wind and hail. We have a flat $25,000 deductible where your current coverage, our proposal has a 1% wind deductible, subject to a minimum of $100,000. So there's like a big deductible difference there. On the page two of the document where it says K Camp differences, coverage is missing, abuse and molestation. We do have that coverage, it is not missing. It is true, it is listed under our public officials' coverage. And again, that's a $500,000 limit for claims subject to the, or claim act. Otherwise, it's $3 million per claim and a $3 million aggregate and it's claim made coverage. So that coverage is there. The next one is airport coverage liability saying it's specifically excluded. And insurance policies are interesting where there's coverage, you know, terms, conditions, limitations, coverage grants, exclusions, and then there's often, often exceptions to the exclusion. So in our policy, there is an exception to the exclusion saying public areas for premise liability is included. And also loading and unloading of persons requiring medical care by member medical professionals, medical personnel. So there are two areas of coverage for the county at an airport. But yeah. So the next one was medical professional liability for health department and jail nurses. That's not mentioned anywhere in K Camp's proposal. That might be true, like coverage documents are pretty dense and not everything gets translated over to, you know, a couple pages on a proposal document. But in our memorandum of coverage, there is coverage for nurses and EMTs. And let's see, yeah. I guess I just wanted to make that point that there is some coverage there for nurses and EMTs for limited professional medical services. Also it mentions there ambulance liability is not mentioned anywhere in the proposal. And again, the coverage is actually there in our memorandum of coverage for EMTs. And the next section here is key differences in coverage. I think we talked about that, that the limit of 500,000 is two of their documents. Otherwise it says K Camp differences, coverage is missing. Underinsured, uninsured, underinsured motors coverage currently you have a million and K Camp is 75,000. And that is true, that is a low limit and there's good reason for that. So typically any person, you know, usually driving a county vehicle will be an employee covered by workers' compensation. The way uninsured motor coverage works, if there's an accident and the other party has no coverage, then the driver of the county vehicle can turn around and sue the county under that uninsured motorist's coverage. It is listed under our public officials' coverage. Double dip, collect the workers' comp. 500,000 dollar limit for legitimately turn around, sue their employer. Claim act, otherwise it's under $3 million per claim. Uninsured and uninsured motors. So that's why we purposely have that, you know, double dipping to 75,000. Your employee in the vehicle would have a 500,000 dollar limit. That's the reason for that. Limit is under $1 million per claim, uninsured and uninsured motors. So that's why we purposely, mentions crime coverage is significantly higher with K Camp than travelers. Then it mentions here, public officials liability includes public entity management and employee practices. These are not two separate kinds of coverage as with travelers. High with K Camp, both covers involve K Camp's coverage with the air public officials liability and claims, public entity management and employee practices. I'm not sure what to say about that, I would just maybe question that. Like K Camp said that in writing possibly, not me but you would. Because most policies, my understanding, do have some type of revision. I'm not sure what to say about that, I would just maybe question that. Actual coverage is low, it's me but you would. And the point is, you do have coverage for public officials and employment practices. I'm not sure what to say really. In my mind, actual coverage situation where, me but you would, there'd be two triggers. Most policies, you do have coverage for, that's covered, public officials. Anyway, that's just to note that I'm more curious about. In my mind, actual coverage situation where. And on the next page, additional points to consider. Both K work and K Camp members are subject to joint several liability. Which is true, it's in the statute and it's in our bylaws. Our members are jointly liable for. And on the next page, extend to the assets of the pool. Both K work and K Camp. Then it goes on to say, individual members are responsible up to limited pools asset. Again, I would question that, that individual members are responsible. Our bylaws specifically state that no member is held to be responsible for claims of other members. And I would also say that K Camp has very strong financials, actuarially sound, regulated by the Department of Insurance. And currently, out of 105 counties in Kansas, 85 are members of, currently members of K Camp. Then it goes on to say group funded pools have the statutory authority to levy assessments. That's true, but K Camp was established in 1991 and in 34 years, we have never assessed our members and likely never will, and there's good reason for that. I like to call it the three-legged stool approach. The first leg is premium contributions. We have an actuary look at the historical losses of K Camp and they advise us what we need to collect in any given year to cover the expected claims of that year. So if there's on target, we will collect enough money. If, you know, catastrophic losses or whatever might happen and come in higher than the actuarial target, well, we purchase reinsurance. All carriers, including chub, chub and travelers, purchase reinsurance and that's when insurance companies buy insurance. So K Camp purchases insurance to cover, cover the pool and our members for catastrophic losses. And the third leg is our surplus position. Like I mentioned, we're very financially strong and we hold a very robust amount of surplus in our bylaws, $24 million. So members are jointly liable, collect enough concentration of assets to the point. Something happened with reinsurance, then it goes on always to call back of surplus. Individual members are responsible, feel very confident that, again, I would question that, that individual members. Not very likely at all that would ever have to assess the membership. Our bylaws, so jointly liable. And the next concern was concentration of risk at K Camp. Because we have a lot of, so we're joining counties, feel very confident, other ones in the area, that the concern is like if there is a large scale of, maybe that could be. And the next concern was concentration of risk. And I'd say it really wouldn't, because I mentioned we purchase reinsurance. So K Camp itself is exposed to only $700,000 if there is a large scale of parents. After we purchase reinsurance, probably we have 2 billion dollars. Say it really wouldn't. And it might have, it is true, we write a lot of counties, but it's statewide. Our exposure to geographic areas in the state of Kansas. After we purchase reinsurance. You know, these large carriers that write nationally and internationally. That's not necessarily any rate of protection, because their rates could be impacted by wildfires in California or, you know, these large carriers that write nationally, they have that exposure. That's not necessarily a fellow Kansas credit, any further protection. The last point here, on this page mentions the guarantee fund, which is not a part of, how commercial carriers are. Again, I would say that's no panacea, just a little research that I've done. It shows that that guarantees point here caps claims. And this page mentions the guarantee fund, which travels a chub, were to fail, you had to apply to that guarantee application. A little research that I've done, what if you had a guarantee point here, caps. And again, we have to hold very strong, we hold strong reserves, which is financially strong. But also, to work with the actuary, they advise us to set aside funds, specifically earmarked, to be able to pay our claims, again, we have ultimate value into the future. We hold strong reserves, which is financially strong. Also, reinsurance, work a surplus, we have strong loss rates. K Camp is very good financial shape. And then they conclude, although our K Camp's contributions premiums are significantly lower, the coverage limit is a half, that's not true, so it's subject to the tort cap. Otherwise, our limit is 3 million on the liability. And then they conclude, although our K Camp. And then it says, oh, it makes some comments about coverage limit, loss ratio, that our contribution that we post to charge, otherwise our limit is sufficient. Long-term pay for these claims, looking at the data that was provided in the package, it shows that over the five-year period, your average claims for property and liability was 282,000. Compare that with our proposal of 474,776. And that's a 59% loss ratio. K Camp is sustainable at a 70% loss ratio. It's very comfortable. And also looking at your claims, it looks like for the years 24, 22, 23, 24, claims over the five-year period. 12,000 average claim for 1,000. Looks like you may have had spikes in 21 and 25. And we're a member-owned organization. And that's a 59%. We don't necessarily penalize our members for spike claims. 22, 24. Claims over the five-year period, claims and 3,000. Last point to you, due to the complexity and difficulty involved with exiting. But we don't necessarily. I'd say it's not difficult at all to exit K Camp. You wanted to exit, you just need to give us 60 days written notice prior to the anniversary date of coverage. So if it's January 1st, you just need to give us, make a resolution, give us 60 days written notice and you're out. It's that easy. And my last point here is a coverage that's not mentioned in either of the proposals, but again, it's in our policy document, this is on the property side. Builders' risk coverage, if you have building projects that are under 2.5 million, that's automatically covered in the K Camps. Analyze our members for spike claims. That's the coverage comparison. We had another minute there, was it? Last point to you. Due to the complexity and difficulty involved with exiting.
I mentioned our, some of our benefits and risk management when I was here doing the presentation earlier this year. But these are things that we offer as part of your coverage, your membership with K Camp that you typically are not going to get from insurance companies without additional coverage. And obviously, there's a whole page of things here, but I know some of them I always like to highlight is the insurance assistance program where you can call with issues to Bolston and talk to Forest Roads. I mentioned that is covered. Additional charge for his time on that to get some advice. Obviously, there's a whole page. We have training courses through online university. We do reimbursement for road scholar tuition and we offer onsite training and seminars. And one of the most popular there is the defensive driving course, which K work also offers, so either one of us can do that. But that's a good benefit for your employees also, it can help them on their personal car insurance and it's good for the county for its time on that. Give them the things to look for to be better drivers. And then we have the risk avoidance grant. We will reimburse you for $2,000 every year. And we offer onsite training and seminars that would help reduce risk for the county. So there's a whole list of other things on here, but those are the ones we typically like to highlight. And then we have the risk avoidance grant. And I can do another copy of that. We will reimburse you for $2,000 every year. And we offer onsite that you purchase that would help reduce risk for the county.
Yes, and unlike insurance companies that are for profit, we're a member-owned. So, you know, you guys are the owner of K Camp once you become a member. And that's how I feel as a county commissioner in Grant County, that anything we have an issue with, we just call and visit with the CEO or we visit with anybody within K Camp and we have a very good working relationship. I'm ending my seventh year as a county commissioner in Grant County. You guys are the owner. Three years left on my term. Current term. And we've been, we have an issue, seven years, I can only speak to the seven years I've been in there. We have, I've had no issues at all dealing with any claims at all going through K Camp. And as a K Camp Board of Trustee for the past year, I've been very happy on the board, working with the board, we have a very good working relationship together as well too. I just think the member services, being a valued member, part of the ownership makes a big difference. For the past year, I've been very happy on the board, working with the board. Commissioners have any additional questions first? I just think the member services, being a valued member, part of the ownership. Thank you for that. Thank you very much. On the board, working with the board.
Do you want to, since you're talking about casual, casual property and liability, or do you want K work to come on in? Iron Horse? Do you want to, since you're talking about casual, casual property and liability, or do you want K work to come on in?
Good evening Commissioners, my name's Katie Taylor. I'm with Iron Insurance Partners. I am the local account executive that works on your county today.
Casual property and liability, or do you want K work?
With Mark Skidmore, he is our president. And good evening Commissioners, my name's Katie Taylor. I'm with Iron Insurance Partners. I am the local account executive. Out of respect for your time, I won't go through every line of your renewal, but I would like to go over some things. My name's Katie. In your package policy, your renewal is down some from what your expiring is. That information is all provided to you. If you have any questions as I go through this, please stop me. Every line of your renewal, but I would like. We were able to seek a new property quote for you. The markets have softened a bit on property. I think what you guys are aware, we've been dealing with 3% wind hail deductibles, it's been pretty well the standard renewal. But I would like. We were able to seek a new property quote. It is softening, so we were able to secure a quote with a 1% wind hail deductible on those key buildings, which we were able to get deducted off $43,000, well the standard wind hail buy down. We were able to seek a new property quote. That is the only meaning we're able to change that has happened with your property and casualty insurance as a building last year, which if you don't have any questions, get any of those other items. Well, this standard can move into your workers' compensation. That is the only meaning we're able to change that has happened with your property and casualty insurance as a building last year, which if you don't have any questions. On your workers' compensation, your expiring premium is $368,451. Your renewal is $398,922. A lot of things go in to your workers' compensation, calculating your workers' compensation premium. Expiring premium experience modification being the primary factor. That did go down from a 1.89 to a 4.5 this year due to some sizable claims. A lot of things go in, calculating that number. And were probably about the last six to eight months, I would say. That did go down from a 1.89. Your staff has been engaging with us. The idea was monthly, but oftentimes it's weekly or more often with our loss control. We do have very robust loss control services that we offer at no cost. We have a dedicated claims analyst that when you receive a claim, they'll point you through everything, try to find some areas where we might recommend improvements to future claims and then of course work with you on the most favorable outcomes. Your staff has been engaging with us. In addition to that, we also have a loss control. Person that comes in and will provide trainings with our loss control. He coordinates where, with your employees to discuss the needs, where we're finding areas that we could improve and of course, we're finding trainings. We offer trainings in-person. We also offer a wealth of training online, English and Spanish as well. I know some of your employees are going to need bilingual services, that's something that we're providing. Areas that we could, at no additional cost as well. Finding trainings. As you can see from the five-year premium loss, on your behalf in the last five years, the carrier has paid over $2,303,000. That's something that we're providing. Or sorry, that's what your premium has been and the carrier has paid $1,400,000. As you can see from the five-year premium loss, with the 61% loss ratio. On your behalf in the last five years, on your property and casualty. On your workers' compensation, it has been a little bit more difficult to get a favorable quote because your five-year premium has been $1,244,619. The carrier has paid, on your behalf, paid $1,807,000. More difficult, $205 to get a favorable quote because it gives you 145% premium. It's been $1,244,000. We're able to take this to a new carrier to get more favorable terms on your employees' mutual and so that is the quote that they've offered. It's been a little bit more difficult, $205 to get a favorable quote because it gives you 145%. Main driver of any insurance premium aside from market trends to a new carrier to get more favorable, the main way to control premium is to get that under control. A lot of that is done by careful relationships built with your staff to understand and analyze what your needs are and then step in and provide the services you're going to make of that. Unfortunately, a lot of that takes time done by to realize the full premium savings. You're already with your staff, actively engaged, understand and analyze what we feel is a very positive relationship with your staff. They have been excellent in providing the information we needed to have to get a good analysis of what needs to be done, very good, working and collaborating with us to fill those policies. To provide your staff, they have been excellent in providing the information we needed to have to get.
I think whenever we were with Alshank, and it's still tied to Alshank, but we have all these people up here, I think anytime you change, there's always that fear of what kind of service you're going to have and the relationships that you have. Whenever we were with Alshank, you're going to have, and I would say that they really, but Iron Horse has really stepped up. They definitely change, there's always that in trying to correct fear of what kind of service you're going to have. They helped us tremendously whenever we did our safety thing. As you know, they've came out and personally did their defensive driving. I can't complain at all about the customer service and assistance that we've received. And I, I did not ask questions, but I probably would ask some questions. Like we just recently had the fire with the compactor. Can't complain at all about. And that is under our inland marine policy and there was some question about. I did not ask questions. Some of the coverage that we had on that and you guys recently, because of the relationships that they have with travelers and stuff too, they were able to advocate on our behalf. And so that is one of the questions that hopefully, and I should have asked you when you were up here and if you wouldn't mind coming and addressing that. Commissioners, is one of, one of the questions I have is who does advocate on our behalf when it's a member-owned? Like if we have a claim that we disagree on or that we need someone to advocate for us, are we, would we have to have legal counsel or how does that work on our behalf? When, like in this case where we really had to work to what we felt like was make it right on our behalf on the compactor? That, that was just a question I have and it's because I've not had a lot of experience with pool and it being member-owned. Thank you. Yeah, that, that was one of the questions that I had.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
We would just ask that you give us the time to let these programs that are already in place unfold and do the good that they will inevitably do.
Thank you for the time this evening. Katie didn't give me a great big agenda, so I don't have a lot to read. I think she wants me to tell stories and my experiences with pools. I actually run our public entity practice group out of Salina and actually work with pools and advocate for pools and believe that there's a large number of public entities that do, should be in a pool. And, and I think it's the smaller 50, 60% of public entities. You all provide services and resources that not every county in, in Kansas provides. And I think that makes you all a little different. I equate a pool with playing on a basketball team. And if I'm going to be on a basketball team and I'm going to be the best player we've got, we're not going to be a very good basketball team. If I can be the fifth or sixth guy, hey, we might be okay, right? I think you have to look at your size, your services, what you all do well and, and think, okay, does, do the other counties in the state of Kansas match up with you when you want to go in one for all and all for one? I'll tell a story about Saline County. And 18 months ago, I stood in front of the commissioners in Saline County and told them as a taxpayer, they should go into K Camp. And it wasn't these gentlemen behind me, but they were nice K Camp folks, right? And Saline County went into K Camp. 18 months later, they'd had two double-digit increases in a marketplace that has calmed down. We were successful in going back to the carrier we had 18 months ago and said, will you honor your quote? And they're like, yeah, we were good. Travelers had fixed all of their issues. I don't know about, if you all know, the insurance marketplace has just been turned on its ear the last five years. My homeowners is not anything like it used to be. But the carriers that addressed their issues early, I think are stable today. But Saline County just left K Camp. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them from that standpoint. I'll turn it over to Sean Myers.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Sean Myers. I am a CEO and I think one of the things we didn't mention is that Mark and I are both owners in Iron Insurance Partners. I want to give a little didn't mention is that Mark and I are both owners in Iron Insurance Partners I want to give a little bit of a history of Iron Insurance Partners and our history with Al Shank because I think that's important for you as a commissioner to understand Iron Insurance Partners was born out of a combination of two agencies in Kansas Keller Leopold Insurance which I was a part of in Garden City Kansas for the last 20 years and Assurance Partners in Salina Kansas which Mark was a part of we came together because both of our agencies had unique value propositions that we believed would be beneficial to each other's client base and so after many months of discussion and dating we decided to get married and become Iron Insurance Partners as a result the services that you have available to you today that that Katie commented to regarding our loss control specialist Chad Greve and our claims analyst Justin Johnson which are both employees of Iron Insurance Partners come to you through that combination of Keller Leopold Insurance and Assurance Partners our agency dates back to 1943 and it dates back that far in southwest Kansas I lived in Garden City for almost 25 years before moving to Wichita during our combination and our expansion of our organization I'm very familiar with this part of the country I'm very familiar with the community of Liberal and Seward Counties I've got half a dozen or so relatives of my wives that all live here and participate in this community and are employees and so we're very familiar with this part of the world we are very familiar with the the trappings of southwest Kansas with weather and all the things that come along with it as Mark mentioned he is head of our public entity practice and and we ensure well over 100 different public entities from schools to townships to counties to cities so our experience is wide and varied in this particular area but I want to talk a little bit about our agency as a whole our agency is committed to rule America our agency may be considered a big agency it's really not it's a collection of 15 unique community-minded agencies led by the people who work in each one of those offices and in particular in Liberal Kansas there are five and those five people are residents of Seward County I may not be but as a business owner my business is and I believe that as an insurance agency we have a duty to provide the level of service and care that we can that every community deserves Al Shank Insurance is a name that we've known for a long, long time because it also began in the 40s with Al Senior and Al Shank Junior and I were having conversations years ago prior to his becoming ill and prior to his passing this was inevitable that Iron would be a part of Al Shank Insurance it just happened in a much different way than I or Al ever anticipated the situation arose at the time of Al's death for us to quickly come in and stabilize what we could after a pretty lengthy process of going through and buying the agency that required us to take some immediate action on on what we needed to do to shore up our employee base get a sense of where our accounts were and what we needed to do to come in and help everybody continue to remain our objective when we buy an agency is not to shutter the doors and make everything go to a main location somewhere else it's not at all it's about supporting the people that live here that work here and making that office and the employee experience stronger than it's ever been I think that's a testament to what we've done we've we have moved locations we believe that was a great move I encourage you all to stop by tomorrow during our open house and ribbon cutting of our new location we partnered with a local business owner who had a building that needed some leasehold improvements and a long-term tenant and that's what we did we will be in Liberal 10 years from now 20 years from now and will help you grow and do all the things that the Seward County commissioners and the people of Seward County want to do we've made an investment in this community we created an opportunity to to allow a business like Al Shank Insurance to continue and the only way that that continues to work is for business to be done locally and I believe that's extremely important fiscal responsibility is one of your key tenants as a commission I believe that wholeheartedly Mark believes that when he stood up and said to Celine County take it to the pool because as a taxpayer it makes sense but here's what I'll tell you about my feelings in it fiscal responsibility extends beyond just going for the lower price but also extending the business locally so that those dollars stay in the community I'm not going to lie to you this Seward County is a significant significant account for our business and it's significant for our for our office here in Liberal and I know that you feel the weight of the decision that you have to make from the perspective of the price but there are five people in this community that are dependent on our continued success you can be a part of that continued success there are some key things that were mentioned in the presentation of our of our folks from K Camp talking about the tort limits and all of that and nothing that they said is incorrect except for the fact that when you talk about the tort limits that's a state tort limit so if you're going to have something filed against you as a county at the federal level there is no tort limit you also operate in some form or fashion outside of the state of Kansas being so close to Oklahoma how does it apply there not sure we know it does in our perspective with our carriers that is all that I have to comment to today I appreciate the relationship that you have had the long-term relationship that you have had with Al Shank I would ask that you continue to honor that relationship with us as we move forward I believe that our opportunity with our resources and our team and the people that April and her team will work with will be second to none I'm open for any questions that you might have but we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and address you as a commission board thank you thank you very much
hey hello Ken Ken Canning from K Camp so April to address a question who advocates for members on a member-owned pool first of all our general claims handling philosophy is being a member-owned pool is probably less times that you even going to fight with us we try to be more generous on first-party claims than a commercial carrier would be you know you own you own this company so it's like a closed loop closed-loop system where you pay the money in we hold a few you have the claim goes back to you but in the event there was a concern there's a couple of avenues built into our bylaws there's a guaranteed appeal process so if you disagree with the desk claim adjusters decision you appeal to the claims manager if you don't like the claims manager's decision you appeal to me as the CEO administrator you don't like my decision you can appeal to the board of directors so you can talk directly to your peers that's the official avenue also you have a board member right in neighboring county if you had a problem with us you could call Mark and Mark could advocate on your behalf but I think for the simple fact that we're member-owned there's less chances that you would have a problem with us on a first-party claim maybe just a couple of points on rebuttal we're meant from the gentleman from and ladies from the agency or regarding the limits like yes of course we know that the Kansas tort claim act applies only to state towards in the state of Kansas that's why we have that $3 million per occurrence limit for all other claims federal claims or if we had to handle a claim in another jurisdiction that does not recognize or honor the Kansas tort cap so and on a regular general liability it's 3 million per occurrence no aggregate so professional public public officials law enforcement do have aggregates public officials is 3 million law enforcement at 6 million so there's ample liability coverage for the county should you come with K Camp and talking about size of the pool like who's best suited for the pool like I mentioned we have 85 counties we have a total of 116 members so also some cities and special purpose districts but for example our largest members just asking David Lamb here Butler County is a member of K Camp population of 69,000 compared to Seward population of 21,000 we also have a bunch in the area McPherson 30,000 Harvey 33,000 Gary 35 Franklin 26 Ford 34 Ellis 29 so you're not too big for K Camp I just asked David does Seward do anything that any of our other members don't do and nothing comes to his mind like we have other members who have landfills and trash service jails sheriffs like just want to make that point that you're not too large to be in K Camp what else did I want to mention oh and our pricing that was just a standard off-the-shelf pricing I don't know what happened to Celine like the gentleman mentioned there was turmoil in the market prices went up for everybody mentioned even travelers maybe that's what happened but we gave you no extra special credits that's our everyday average price we had no idea what your expiring premium was it was very shocking to us as well of the size of the difference between the the pricing pricing but we didn't do anything special to lure you in that's our everyday price like I mentioned so that's my points there and I think the public entity risk pooling I believe provides the best long-term value proposition for counties so we have the coverage we have the costs and we have the risk management training and service programs so we do hope that you decide to join the K Camp family thank you
we want to do K work
good evening thank you for having us commissioners and all other staff members of Seward County great to be here appreciate your time I know we've been at it for about an hour here so I'll try to be brief and concise we are K work Kansas Workers Risk Cooperative for Counties we are the pool for counties on the workers' compensation side I'm Colin Holt House I'm the COO and staff council for K work this is Sean Harold and Sean is a safety consultant he's one of five staff members that we have that are safety consultants if I could just make a couple comments here to summarize that'd be all I'd ask for time wise basically K work has 87 member counties as well very very similar to the other pool and that's there's only 105 in the state and you got to throw about 10 of them out because they're so large they self-insure and that's primarily because of the cost the savings on premiums and then the services that K work provides like I said we have five full-time safety consultants consultants that drive around the state and visit all member counties multiple times a year conducting safety inspections and teaching a number of safe driving courses and other things to boot but K work just provides a number of services the private industry private insurance doesn't we're financially accountable it's a it's ran by a board of trustees which is very transparent with financials one of the benefits of a pool K work does not use your premium dollars to pay any commissions so the staff's just paid a salary and that's what it's going to be and that's what it is so there's there's no incentive on the on any type of commission side K works owned by the counties and operated by the counties we have a seven-member board of trustees the reason K work was founded in the 1990s was because counties couldn't get adequate fair pricing out of the insurance market at that time that's why pools came about so the whole focus with pools is to you know create a strong pool with a number of member counties that helps keep costs down and the insurance all by its nature is the sharing of risk any any which way you slice it that's what insurance is 71% of K work members have been members of K work for over 10 years members of the pool for over 10 years really good longevity and retention we have three strong county prospects for this fall that we're looking at trying to add and we have a total of 97 members so about 10 of them are instrumentalities rural water districts and things of that nature the safety consultants they do defensive driving forklift safety lager and work zone training they conduct KDOL and OSHA-based safety and compliance inspections they do those four times a year but they'll come out and do any other training that you request at any time and are happy to to do that they also will come out and help you set up safety committees and run safety meetings they'll teach your staff how to run their own safety meeting safety is it's very behavioral based over time workforces can and do get better at it the more they talk about it and the more they learn so K works you know mission is is helping workers stay safe and and that comes through education and these guys are great at what they do and we're glad to have them as far as like scholarships or scholarship type incentives go K work will pay half the cost up to $250 for employees three employees to attend the Sheriff's Association jail training will cover $75 per employee for poet training post offer employment testing if you have after you make a hire if you if you have employees tested we'll cover like I said $75 on that and then as far as claims handling is concerned that's always another important factor we work with CIS their Cowell Insurance Services out of Overland Park and you deal with and talk to the same two people anytime and every time you call and they're great they're wonderful Amanda handles lost time injuries and Jenny handles medical only injuries and they've they've been with K work for a long time and all the all the members seem to really they're fast at responding and the members really appreciate it their sense of urgency there Sean do you have anything else you'd like to add are there any questions we could answer for you
the only the only question that I had is because you guys came in significantly lower but I think that we were using different you guys had a specific form that we filled out for you that subtracted I think you subtracted off overtime vacation or PTO time so I just I wanted to question that because I know every year when we go through our audit and you've seen our claims loss we always end up having to pay some additional premium because of that and so I just really want to make sure that we were comparing apples to apples and that we are covered and that we're not going to be hit with a big amount after an audit later on that is a big concern of mine
sure I appreciate you bringing that up they were they're just like they said the two biggest factors are payroll and your experience mod and as she mentioned the experience mod the most recent one was the 1.45 you know that is what it is the past is the past but that's why we want to work with you as much as we can to help improve safety and get those numbers down and then we use the number that you all provided us with on the payroll which I believe was 9.626 million something in there all insurance agencies or companies they they do payroll audits and as long as that payroll is relatively accurate you know there wouldn't be any additional charges you could get a check back from us if it's if it was under you you could receive an invoice as well but you know everybody everybody does payroll audits But, you know, everybody, everybody does payroll audits.
Right. And, and I know, obviously, we have turnover and we're down employees right now compared to what we have been. I just, that was just a question that I wanted to ask because I, I cringe if I have to come back to the commissioners and say, oh, well.
Right, I can appreciate that. We've been, we've been really upping our efforts to educate as much as possible and have those conversations on the front end. Nobody's trying to misrepresent. It's just that things happen, especially in the last five years where you do these mid-year raises or you add a number of personnel. Most of the counties have experienced that since twenty-twenty-five, if not, you know, more than.
I don't, I didn't want anybody to think that I, that I think anybody's misrepresenting, not at all.
Oh, no, I just say that all the time anyway.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I just want to clarify his point on the workers' compensation. He's correct. They're going to be trued up one way or the other. We've got historical audit information where your payroll runs about eleven million dollars a year, based on prior twelve-month audit. So if it comes in closer to below ten, our insurance carrier is going to give you money back, same way. So if you, if your payroll is down right now based on new estimates, then we're not comparing apples to apples exactly. Right?
Commissioners, I just want to, I'm trying to think of everything, too. I just want to make sure both, both agencies covered landfill. I just want to make sure K Camp folks, and I hope that we explained that, to make sure that you understand we're a subtitle-D landfill. And then we also have a waste haul operation, so we do have Oklahoma employees, and we do haul in the Oklahoma, Texas, and Kansas markets. So I just wanted to make sure, I, I think we gave you all of that information, but I just want to be sure that all of that's included in there.
Will you cover workman's comp in Oklahoma? K Work? Yep.
Yeah.
You did?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to think of everything so that I don't mislead them in any way.
So, general questions now? So last year, we talked about full coverage on old vehicles. According to the schedule, we have, still have full coverage on old vehicles.
Katie, I don't know if you can help us with that, but I know that if we had, if they were of a certain age and of a certain mileage, that we drop those to just liability-only coverage.
I didn't hear that.
Sorry, if you, and I hate to ask you guys, but if you can come forward when you speak to them. And that's for our viewing audience to hear as well.
Previously requested that vehicles not meeting an age or value threshold did not be covered. So there are seventy-five vehicles that are only covered with liability in this year's renewal.
Seventy-five?
Yes, because they are very low-value older vehicles.
I didn't see.
I know some of the larger trucks were still.
I didn't see seventy-five on the list.
And again, they do still have the liability coverage. They just don't have the comp collision that you would expect on the other.
They have, this list that was furnished to us shows, that's what I assume it shows, no, which tells me there's no physical damage, correct?
On, on those seventy-five, no physical damage.
Yeah. But, and I thought we went over this pretty thoroughly, but um, maybe not. Like a nineteen-seventy-seven Dodge in fire, this still carries physical damage. I'm just going down the list. Roden Bridge, there's a couple nineteen-eighty-six and nineteen-eighty-nine trucks.
Those are duck trucks?
I mean, what the, what's the value we're looking at?
That's what, I mean, what, what is it? That's just.
The age and the value were what we used to make those determinations.
You know, there's several, two-thousand, I left my notes at home, but two-thousand-eight Chevy Silverado pickup. Two-thousand-elevens are gone, but because we had a compactor that caught fire.
Yes, I'm very.
It's on the schedule for one-point-one million, right? A compactor with rebuild.
It was nine-hundred thousand.
Compactor with re, I thought this was a compactor with rebuild that got burnt in the fire.
That is correct. It was on the schedule for nine-hundred thousand.
One-point-one million.
Okay.
Unless I got a different list that you're looking at than I'm looking at. Item number one-thirty-two.
I'm not sure.
Your point was the insured value versus what the actual payout was, is that right?
Yeah, what was the actual payout after the fire?
It was two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand and some change. I don't have the exact figure memorized.
Twenty-five percent.
That was on an actual cash value. So anytime you're insured under actual cash value, there's going to be a level of depreciation that comes out of that. So that is what the, the total was after that depreciation amount.
I just look at this, all these lists, to me, need updated to be realistic. There was still a nineteen-seventy-nine John Deere, which would be twenty-one, forty-six-years-old tractor at Roden Bridge.
And I mean, I'll just, I'll be honest, I know we talked about vehicles. Your larger equipment, I, I didn't put a value or an age on that to tell them.
Right, but I mean, why are we insuring something that's, what's a nineteen-seventy-nine John Deere tractor worth? Or nineteen-seventy-eight, what's a Batko?
I think, Steve, to answer your question, I think you're bringing up a good point in that sometimes there are, especially with larger public entities, you end up with things that you've had for a very long time, right? And so, you know, some of the, some of the specific vehicles may be used for a specific purpose. They may have attached equipment. While they may be older, they may have a specific purpose that needs for them to be insured, okay? Volunteer Fire Department says, as, as an example, you may have a really old fire engine, but that really old fire engine might be the only fire engine that, that community has, and so it needs to be insured at a, at a full replacement cost value. I wouldn't disagree, Steve, that one of the things that we, that we do, that we want to continue to do is to actively engage in reviewing these schedules at a very detailed basis with, with April and her team and provide some suggestions to you about what should be, could be insured and make that, let that be your decision. Do you want to insure a tractor from nineteen-seventy-nine? I could see why you wouldn't, right? And we can have that discussion. But in the past, with, with a lot of public entities, a lot of things get insured sometimes that, that maybe don't necessarily need to be. But I think in this particular situation, you know, some of this stuff may be specifically insured for a reason. I think we, we continue to talk about with our public entities about getting on a routine basis of saying, okay, when the vehicle hits a certain age, it moves to liability only, right? And then we establish that process and procedure. The same thing could be done with an equipment list on the inland marine schedule, right? So.
Whether it be equipment or vehicles, I mean, I'm looking, you know, I left my printed notes at home, but two-thousand-and-thirteen Dodge, the sheriff department probably doesn't have a Dodge pickup that's twelve-years-old. Be my guess.
Well, listen, we're, we are happy to go, go through the entire inventory, right? And, and, and go through that.
We, we went over this last year, and I thought a lot of this had got changed, and maybe some of them did, but.
I think we changed some.
But again, just common sense. The nineteen, I'm, you know, I'm going to pick on rural fire because it's a nineteen-seventy-seven, it's forty-eight-year-old pickup.
Sure. And if it's got attached equipment to it that provides a service to that fire department?
When's the last, I'm asking the fire chief, when's the last time the pickup was actually used?
Yeah. So Steve, we're, we're more than happy to, to, to sit down and go through that. That's what.
That's something we need to do in turn.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's.
And, and we're happy to help you with that process and establish values and, and make sense of what needs to be insured and what doesn't. Let you guys decide that. So I think it's a great question.
So how do we, how do we handle the allocation of the premiums between rural fire, development corp?
I, I cannot answer how K Camp would do that for us since I've never been with them, but Iron Horse goes through it because they, they know by VIN number what vehicle or piece of equipment or building is to what department, and they break that out for us every year. And then that's how we then send out the information to each department, and they pay those departments that reimburse you, then they reimburse the general fund for that amount. So you'll notice in the budget, when you approve the budget, there's always the amount down there, just like it is in employee benefits of those departments that reimburse us and the amount of money that we fill. And there are some departments in your general fund that also reimburse you if they are, they can get paid for services, like your event center and activity, your fairgrounds complex reimburses you, EMS reimburses you because they have the ability to bring in revenue, and so they pay back the general fund or general courthouse for insurance. But, so they break it down for us. I don't know how K Camp handles that or if that's a service that you offer or if we are going to have to hand calculate that or whatever, I don't know.
Yes, just taking a quick look at the schedule that was provided to us. We have every item, vehicle, or mobile equipment identified to a department.
Yes.
David can't speak.
And I can tell you, from the, the years I was clerk, you can take the, you can go online on our Orgami site that we handle claims and everything else if you join us. You can download that schedule into an Excel file and sort it by department, and that's what I did every year when the bill would come in. I would just download it, sort it, and then like all my fires together, all my roads together, and I bill those departments for it. So it's a very simple process. And there's people in the office that can walk you through that if you needed any additional information.
So, so my question on the allocation was not only the vehicles, but liability, workman's comp, the whole insurance package?
They, they break it down for us, Iron Horse does. And so that would be something that we would have to get from K Work, too, or if they have a similar system where we go back and we bill that by department. But yes, right now, those departments reimburse us for that expense as well. It's paid for out of general courthouse in a lump sum at the beginning of each year because obviously you have to renew your insurance. And then they give us the breakdown, and we go back and work with the clerk's office, and they do a journal entry where they journal entry the money back from those departments that are responsible in the budget for reimbursing us for, I shouldn't say us, I need to stop saying, reimbursing general courthouse for the expense that was paid out of there for those departments that are responsible for reimbursing. It does include work comp as well. Which if we go, if you went with K Work, K Camp, we're just going to have to, to figure out how we do that so that we make sure we get the journal entry done properly. And on equipment, I think that's something that the commissioners are going to have to sit down and determine as a commission, what you've, what the threshold is. We did that on vehicles, but we did not do that on heavy equipment. And you know, what, what do you, what do you consider a year? Or a lot of your equipment is based on hours, not the actual year of the equipment. And then if you're going to want to do it based off, you know, what parameters do you want us to use to determine how you want that covered? And my question to both agencies, I guess, too, is if they determine that they don't want to cover something like the tractor, for instance, but we have an employee that is injured while operating that piece of equipment, and we don't have that equipment covered, would it be covered under work comp? Yes, okay, I'm getting the head nod, yes, okay. That was my other question.
The vehicle would be covered under liability, just not the physical damage. That's what we're referring to.
Yep. On your equipment, though, I thought I understood somebody to say, would you even want to cover it at all? And I didn't know if it didn't have any coverage, like if we do damage to something else while operating that tractor or somebody's hurt or something like that.
We need to have liability coverage if we were driving down the road and someone hit us or we hit them.
Right. And not all of our stuff's used out on the road, but you understand what I'm saying. If commissioners give us a threshold, we definitely will work with the insurance companies to make sure that we are meeting that.
So Scott, is the idea that we're making a decision this evening?
We can, or we can think about it. I mean, we got to make it by.
What is the date that both agency or all agencies would need to know by to get us renewed for next year? They, they have their next meeting on December the fifteenth. Is, if we let you know by then, are we okay? Or would they need to have a special meeting or? Thank you, everybody.
Persephone, would you be good tabling this issue till the fifteenth?
Yeah, I would. I would like also to, um, or reference to what Steve said, itemize that those people's equipment that they think or should be scrubbed or not a part of that and see what kind of financial impact it would be. Also be very cautious about that, even though it does have liability that we don't get sued for not having enough coverage if something happens. That would be my only problem.
To me, that's an internal issue that we need to handle, so.
But as far as the decision of what was presented to us today, I'm going to table it until the fifteenth.
Okay. We'll make a motion to table the insurance decisions until the December fifteenth commission meeting, both the workman's comp and the property.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Stanton to table the insurance packet, item number six, until the fifteenth of December. Seconded by Commissioner Carr.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So either, either or, whenever, does the, is the property and casualty dependent on my work comp or can it be, is it separate? Completely separate?
It's separate.
Okay. Okay.
Show of right hands for approval.
Aye.
Five and O? Okay. We'll have you a decision by the fifteenth.
Commissioners, may I ask one more thing? Do you want them, I, I know it's not convenient for them to probably travel back on December fifteenth, all of the people that are in here, but are you wanting them available by phone? Or would you get me questions prior to, to have them answered if you wanted?
We have questions.
We can get to you before then.
Okay, thank you.
Right, we'll move to item number seven. See, we tabled that till next meeting.
Right. We'll move to item number seven. See, we tabled that till next meeting agenda. Move to item number eight.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
Good evening, commissioners. Andrew Barclay, Seward County Fire Chief. Um, coming before you this evening to request your authorization to sign an agreement with the Kansas State Fire Marshal. Um, throughout the years, anytime the state has called on local agencies to respond across the state for wildfires, for example, it's been on our dime, out of our pocket. We absorb that cost. Um, with our new state fire marshal, um, he is working to put a plan in place to help eliminate that. And so what they have done is they worked with a county, Marion County up in northeast Kansas and got this working throughout the year. And now they've opened it up to the other counties. So basically in this agreement, it's the legal stuff, you know, um, covering all the normal HR stuff as well as the state stuff. Um, basically he's going to cover us from anywhere at the high end, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars an hour to the low end of one eighty-four an hour, depending on the truck they need. Depending on the, um, depending on the truck type, depends on the amount of people we would send. Uh, the department does meet all the required training requirements to, in this agreement. Um, and so for us, it was kind of a no-brainer to get on this. So when they call for help and where I see this, not only on large-scale wildfire incidents, but in the past, the state has pre, pre-positioned equipment based on red flag, high fire danger days. And so if there's a red flag warning in northeastern Kansas, they're going to pull from southwest where the fire danger may be lower. And so we'd be compensated per hour for having that truck there on standby for them. Um, one of the concerns I had is being a small department with staff. I started talking with the city fire chief Kelly Kirk about working into a, a possible future agreement that shall, shall the state call on us, we'll send the truck, one of our people, and he'll send our firefighter from him, allowing us not to short-staff ourselves for the deployment. Um, so with that, it's an opportunity for the fire district to recoup money if requested. If they do call and request, we don't have to, uh, go. We can deny that request based on weather conditions and staffing levels, kind of like any other mutual aid agreement in the state of Kansas. And I'll entertain any questions.
So in the past twelve months, how many calls have you got?
For out of state or for, for across the state, zero.
Zero?
Yes.
So when's the last time you got a call?
The last time I got a call to go anywhere outside of our neighboring counties where this wouldn't apply was probably five years ago. Doug Jorgensen called me and asked me to send a crew to California. And my guy said, you can't, can't make that happen. So. But this is just for inside Kansas.
Right. So when's the last time you got a call inside Kansas for mutual aid?
Mutual aid.
Other than mutual aid?
Mutual aid with neighbors. Outside of that, probably been a year.
Cause this doesn't cover mutual aid. This is just if the state of Kansas calls you.
Correct. This is not your neighboring, neighbors helping neighbors in neighboring counties. But prime example in that, the Beaver River fire, the state, state-to-state deployment. If they called and we went, we would be covered as part of that state-to-state deployment. Um, my understanding with everything. But yeah, it hasn't happened. It could happen and there's an opportunity to recoup money there if it does happen.
I move that we accept the agreement with the Kansas State Fire Marshal.
Back now.
So my question is, I got another question. Did we wear out our equipment though, going across the state? I'm going to put the Kansas.
Yeah. And so with that, I've been a very big skeptic on the state in the past because it always seemed like the local municipalities were supposed to bail the state out when there was a massive fire going on because they called on all the local agencies to go assist. Cause the state doesn't really have a state forestry like our neighboring states do. And so when this has started, when Mark took over the state fire marshal's office and started working to take care of the, the local agencies that would be responding on that behalf of the state request, it's, it's a start. And so for us, it was, you know, we could have a wet winter here or a wet fire season here in northeast be getting hounded. We would have an opportunity to help our, our neighbors across the state in that response.
But you did say you can deny a call if you need to.
Absolutely.
There's a motion by Commissioner Abbott to approve fire agreement with the state. And there was a second by Commissioner Fuller. Show of right hands for approval.
Aye.
Five and O.
Thank you, commissioners. Yes.
Can you take a small break? Yeah. Do you want to recess?
Let's recess for ten minutes, come back at seven sixteen. Little boys break for little girls break. So. He will come back from recess. Come back for order.
Thank you for the recess.
You're welcome.
I'm here, sir.
Okay. We'll move to item number nine, twenty twenty-six airport lease.
Commissioners, I come back to you again this year to let you know that, uh, we need the lease renewal agreement for the Seward County Event Center. I had reported to you in a Friday report that Hillary had contacted, uh, Brian Fornwald, who is the manager, um, over the airport. He let her know. They still do not have everything finalized to be able to let us know, uh, what the price would be to purchase this. And so we do need to sign the renewal. In the event that we sign the renewal and then, uh, we are able to purchase the property, then he did let her know that they would prorate that out and we would get credit for what we had paid for in the lease.
That would be both leases at the same time, we hope.
We would, we would hope, but-
We're on the list on the other property also.
We are. And we got the appraisals back on both properties, but-
Oh, it's just a long process.
Yeah.
I've been there.
I move that we accept the twenty twenty-six lease renewal agreement for Seward County Event Center.
Second.
My second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Abbott to approve the lease number one forty-four for the Seward County Activity Center for twenty twenty-six. And a second by Commissioner Helm. Show of right hands approval.
Aye.
Five and O. Item number ten, audio, video recordings of planning and zoning.
Um, commissioners, as you're aware, there's been a request to livestream all planning and zoning meetings by Commissioner Stanton. We talked about this at the last meeting on, um, November seventeenth. Um, unfortunately, at this time, we haven't been able, um, to get additional information, um, from Granicus. Uh, Clayton can let you know about that. We have a new rep and I believe he was trying to get the answers.
That's what usually happens when you get a good working relationship with a vendor and an account rep. They usually move up the company or move on. So we're dealing with a new account rep for Swagat or Granicus right now. And he hasn't returned anything. I don't know if he's taken an extra long vacation for Thanksgiving or what. But I, I left him another message today to let me know if there would be any additional increase in, uh, scheduling and planning and zoning meetings. But, uh, for the, the December eighth one, we can schedule that as a, as a special meeting. So there's no problem with, with getting that one scheduled and we can work from there after, at that point.
I'm sorry. Um, I wasn't quite understanding the notes here. Did P and Z need to approve that as well or they already had? For December eighth.
Uh, we haven't taken it before, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission.
We don't need to. We're just going to deal with it as a special meeting.
Yes. And so what I did do, and Albert is here this evening too, but in talking with IT, um, and with Albert, uh, what we're going to do is set the Planning and Zoning Commission up at your chairs. There is six of them. Well, there's plenty of room to fit them in. That a way, um, it can be livestreamed like we're doing now, um, for December eighth. And then, um, if, if that's what you guys, um, choose to do as a, as a group. And then we can continue to work with Granicus. We can continue to look into the, um, issues that, um, Commissioner Stanton had talked to the city of Liberal and the way they're livestreaming. There's several questions that came up for us in that, that we haven't had an opportunity to visit with them about because right now everything for us ties together. So our agenda, our packets, the notifications go through. So our website, our Agenda Quick, um, our- So our website, our Agenda Quick, our live streams, all of that is through one system. That's how it's indexed. That's how you can go through and do all of your searches. It also provides transcripts. And there's just a lot of services and then IT uses it, administration uses it, and the clerk's office uses it. And so we just want to make sure that, you know, however the city's handling things, if it's really an option for us, I know that they utilize something to do their agendas and everything too. So we'll just have to talk with them.
So I have a question. Okay, so we're specifically talking about planning and zoning. What happens if the Fair Board wants all their stuff livestreamed because their, some of their members can't make it? Or what if some of the other committees or departments that we have that have, are wanting livestreamed? Or videoed? What are we going to tell all them? Do we have a line that we're going to draw, or why are we picking one to do and not others?
I would say that the December 8th meeting is a significant meeting for the entire county. I think that's, you know, if you're going to have to quantify things, I think that's probably rather different than an average Fair Board meeting, which I don't think they would request to have streamed.
Do we voice record the P and Z meetings? Do we, we currently record the voices?
All the meetings are recorded, plus we have minutes that we take. That's provided to the public. And speaking of livestreaming, I haven't had a single comment or any feedback whatsoever besides Mr. Stanton.
Well, just to refresh everyone's memory, these requests came from land. Is this humorous? I'm curious. This request came from landowners who owned land in Seward County that live out of state or Johnson County. It's a legitimate request.
Yeah, they can set up here and there's nothing out of the, it shouldn't be nothing.
We can at least do it for the December 8th meeting until we have some more answers.
That is the primary request, and there are a lot of other considerations with, does the system the city use actually meet our needs? We don't know.
But the way we currently are livestreaming this evening for the commission meeting, we can do that for the December 8th meeting. I also wanted to let you know, you know, we have no way of knowing how many people could possibly attend in person for the conditional use permit public hearing. And this room has a capacity limit of 128. We do not have 128 chairs to put in this room, but what we can do is put, by putting the planning and zoning board up here, it also will allow us more room in this room for capacity. IT, along with planning and zoning and administration, will be working that evening. We will have overflow out here and the TV setup to make sure that anybody who can't fit in this room can still hear everything that's going on, so they have the opportunity to come up and give public comment if need be. We also will have it for overflow in the main lobby and on the TV in our main lobby, and we will have staff that can oversee all the overflows if needed. But to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak and can hear what is taking place in the meeting in the event the overflow runs out of this.
But it's not zoom meeting either. They're not going to be able to.
Correct.
And yes, I did, and I think in my Friday report, I put all of that information. Trish Voth or Voth, I apologize, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing her name correctly, had let us know, you know, we are not obligated, and it would be very difficult to try to read all of the social media comments coming in from the livestream, and we're not obligated to read those or answer those. So just to avoid any.
Just like we don't for a commission meeting.
Yeah, to avoid any of that, though, we'll just turn those comments off for the evening, but people will be able to see it. And so tomorrow, the agenda goes out for the meeting.
I'm getting into, this is more information than what this agenda.
Yeah, we'll have the agenda out tomorrow by noon. And that would be provided on Seward County's website under planning and zoning.
So back to the audio video recordings. So we're just talking this one? Special meeting, public hearing?
They can use this and use our system.
So that will be the plan for the December 8th meeting. Does there need to be any further discussion on all of those planning and zoning meetings being recorded?
I think if we're voice recording the other regular meetings, we're fine.
Do you ever have anybody, Albert, come and ask to watch those or listen to them? Never?
Are they currently posted on the website? Okay.
So do we need to make a motion to?
I don't think it needs to be in a form of a motion. Commissioner Helm, do you need me to stay up here for the next item?
I mean, we're still, I know as a commission, you guys will get tired of me repeating it, but, you know, through the budget process, we agreed to come back no matter what after the first year and look at cuts. So I just want everybody to be remembering and thinking about, we, something that as a commission, we promised the public we would do, so. Just want to remind you all again that we as a commission, all five of us need to be coming up with ideas rather than one, or maybe two or three. It's a five commission deal.
Okay. Steve, as part of that, do we need to revisit the process we use for, whether it's merit or longevity or any other types of salary increases?
I mean, I would think common sense would tell us that till we get through this budget process, there are no, you know, even discretionary spending. Spend kind of, as you look through the vouchers and through the credit card payments, it's, you know, the mentality of, well, if you got it in your budget, you can spend it. That kind of needs to be put to the shelf now and, you know. And that would also, I suppose, could include anything related to do with payroll. But certainly any discretionary spending. When you've got uniforms, just.
So would payroll changes in that event need to come before the commission?
I would think so. Let's.
I would, I would ask that there is a motion made for that for the record because I've had authority in the compensation system. Like if we have a new hire, if they are told that they will get an increase after they've completed their orientation period, we usually start them at a lower rate. They, after they complete their orientation period, then they get that. If you're wanting to stop all of that, I would ask that, because you have a policy that states otherwise. So if you want to limit that for a period of time, or you want, however you want to do that, I do feel like you need to take action.
I would think common sense would prevail, but I would like a copy of that policy also.
So it's like DOT. I mean, if you have somebody without DOT license, you hire them at a lower rate, then when they get their CDL, you bump them up where all the other CDL drops.
But as far as that, raises have been given for that. If we have had to rehire positions, you can't always rehire for what we paid, unfortunately, a former position. It's unfortunate to get somebody to fill a position. Sometimes you have to pay more, but it falls in that comp policy, but nobody's just, you guys have not approved for there to be an across-the-board raise for the past two years. So there's not been that.
Well, this is something we can revisit in two weeks, and in the interim, we can get a copy of what the current policy is.
Yeah, I can send out the compensation policy tomorrow.
Okay, we'll move to. How many executive sessions? Do we need one for?
I need two for personnel. One for a personnel matter regarding non-elected personnel, and a second one, you wanted a executive session. Oh, I'm not going to be included in that. Oh, okay, awesome. Okay. So I need one then that.
Okay, for how long?
And then Forrest, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so I apologize. I misunderstood tonight. I thought they were going in to do my performance evaluation, and usually your legal counsel is a part of that. So would you still need to be a part of it, even though I won't be included in it? I would think that you're.
That would be entirely up to the commission. If they have questions or they think they might have questions where counsel advice would be helpful, then I'm happy to join. If they don't feel like they need that, then I don't, I don't need to.
Yeah, you can join, Forrest, it's okay. So how long for the first?
I just need five minutes.
It's personal, okay. I move to recess into executive session for discussion of personnel matters of non-elected personnel under KSA 754319B1 for five minutes to include the commission, April Warden and Forrest.
Rhodes.
Rhodes. Rhodes, oh. To reconvene in the commission chambers at 7:38. The subject matter of the discussion will be non-elected personnel.
Did you want to include Brock or just?
Uh, totally Brock, too.
Second. Yep. Here's a motion by Commissioner Helm and a second by Commissioner Abbott. Show of right hands for approval.
Do I need to call back in?
Good.
Okay, there was action taken in executive session.
I'm making a motion.
Just to clarify, there, there was an action taken. There was consensus reached. The action is.
Yeah, that's right. You're, you're right.
He's just saying there's no action taken.
That's why we have you here, Forrest. Yeah, there was a consensus, so now we need to make a, is there a motion?
Go ahead. I'm signing.
I move that we waive the waiting period for benefits for, oh my God, Ms. Johnston.
Angela.
Angela Johnston.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Abbott to waive the 60-day waiting period for insurance for Angela Johnston, and a second by Commissioner Helm. Show of right hands for approval.
Aye.
Five and O. Okay.
How long? Twenty minutes? Twenty minutes, yeah.
I move to recess into executive session for discussion of personnel matters of non-elected personnel under KSA 754319B1 for 20 minutes to include the commission and Forrest Rhodes to reconvene in commission chambers at 8:01 PM. The subject matter of the discussion will be non-elected personnel.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Helm and a second by Commissioner.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Ham and second by Commissioner Stanton. Show of right hands for approval.
Aye.
Five and O.
Thank you.
Okay, no action taken in executive session. Okay, item number 12, administration comments.
I have no other comments tonight, other than I will be attending Kansas Association of Counties conference next week. I will, I guess, wait and leave at 4:00 AM on Tuesday morning to stay for the public hearing.
Good. Commission comments? Sir, Tammy said?
I believe that there are more good people in this world than bad, and I hope you all have a good week.
Just a couple of things. Last meeting, I think Tammy requested and we all requested, from the treasurer's office, a copy of the insufficient fund accounts.
And when?
No, the one I have, we got it in June, had the date, not necessarily the exact date, but the date of the year, but it didn't have any amounts or really anything. So kind of, so we can kind of, hopefully, we're never going to clear the account of it, maybe clear it up a little bit more. And also, so I'm confused on tax statements, real estate. Have they been sent? Do we have a-
I've got mine. I just got, received mine today. So why does it say on the tax statement, 11/21, they were printed on? We'll just get them.
I mean, could you maybe get us an answer on, was it a software issue or was it something else? Because, you know, I've heard two different scenarios. And if it's a software issue, what are we going to do to prevent that in the future?
I can put it right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I will leave it at that. Originally, we were told it was a software issue, and then I did not attend the GOP meeting, but then I heard it was announced that she was hoping that there would be a BODA ruling, and she was waiting to mail them out.
If they were printed on the 21st, I would assume they would have been mailed a few days later, couple of days later, whatever.
Like I say, we just need to correct the situation.
Yeah, and if it is, we are having issues with CIC, what, two years later? No, I understand. But if we're having other issues, we need to get those addressed.
Yes.
I'll have no comments tonight. Steve, care of some of the things I had to. Okay, Persephone, what do you have?
I'm sorry. I just want us to all operate in integrity. That's what I wanted to do. That's what I want to say to all the employees. Whatever you're doing, whether you're elected or unelected, please operate in integrity and tell the truth and squash all of these issues. I certainly hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and we're looking for a festive holiday season. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Stanton, you got anything? Okay. Suggestion cards? Beena?
Make a motion to dismiss.
Second, motion by Commissioner Ham to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Carr. Show of right hands for approval. Five and O.
Aye.
Okay.